...up on Facebook, we're experiencing technical difficulties.
You're all set to start.
All right.
Do you want a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
I'd make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Out of executive session, we call this meeting to order for the Select Board and Pledge of Allegiance is first.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Presentations, Maine Farmland Trust.
Hello everyone. I'm gonna start with just a quick handout.
I have one already.
We have one.
In the packet? That's great, we'll save paper.
Thank you.
Save your money.
Um, all right, well, how's it going everyone?
Very well.
My name is Thatcher Carter. I work with Maine Farmland Trust as the Municipal Policy Associate. And I'm gonna just sort of start off with a brief explanation of what Maine Farmland Trust is as an organization, and maybe the scope of our work, and then dive into the details of why I am in front of you all this evening, and a program that we're developing that is specifically focused on working with municipal governments such as yourself. So Maine Farmland Trust is a member-powered statewide nonprofit organization. Our mission is to protect farmland, support farmers, and advance the future of farming in our state. And we do that through a wide variety of different program areas and services, one of which is our Farmland Protection Program, where we act a bit more like a traditional land trust, working with conservation easements and permanently protecting land. But then we also have our Farm Business Program, a Farmland Access Program, as well as our Policy and Research Program, which is the program that I work under. We have staff focused at the federal, state, and now through me, the municipal level as well. I was brought onboard about a year and a half ago at this point, and my work with municipalities has really been divided up into two components so far. The first, really being, working to research and write an update to our full-length Municipal Policy and Planning Guide. It's about 150-page, comprehensive look at what town governments can do to support agriculture. And we're actually releasing that, I believe, tomorrow, so I can make sure you all get a copy of that resource. So a big part of my job has been researching that, updating that guide and bringing it into context. We've been doing that in collaboration with Maine Department of Agriculture, Conservation, and Forestry. And then the other part of my job is beginning to develop relationships directly with local town governments and provide technical assistance and support on developing ordinances, comprehensive plans, and other strategies that town governments can do to support farming. So taking some of these ideas in our guide and then working with towns to put them into practice. And as I'm describing that, it sounds a little bit casual at this point, and it has been. I've really just been taking inquiries as they've come from town governments. And why I'm in front of you tonight is because we're in the process of putting together a proposal through the United States Department of Agriculture Rural Community Development Initiative. And this would allow us to pilot a bit more of a structured approach to working with town governments. The grant is a three-year grant, and it's focused, as the USDA describes it, on technical assistance and capacity building around economic development strategies in rural communities. And we're envisioning an application right now that would focus on municipal capacity building, specifically thinking about agriculture as a key component of local and regional economic development. So we're still in the process of ironing out the concrete details for what this program will look like. But right now, we are sort of in the process of attending meetings like this, coming to talk to boards like yourself, and just sort of gauge interest and potentially being a part of the program. Right now, we are reaching out to towns that, one, have an active agricultural community and farmland resources, and then we're also reaching out to towns that, relatively compared to the rest of the state, have less planning capacity and resources to, you know, do something like this independently. The grant, as it's written by the USDA, is targeted at under-resourced rural communities, so there are eligibility requirements related to population, as well as median household income. I looked at the town of Walderboro, and you all, as we're understanding it, would be eligible to participate with us in this program. And now I've sort of been alluding to this program the whole time. I kind of wanted to just take a minute to describe what specifically we're envisioning, and if you all, you know, did have interest in learning more about it, what it would look like if you were to participate. It is a, basically, over the first year, we would do a series of trainings for municipal officials, really again focused on that capacity and skill building in the area of farm-friendly municipal tools and strategies. So this first year of trainings would really cover a wide range of different topics and issues. We'd probably start at the basics, you know, why is it important to support agriculture and farming? How can we incorporate this into our town as a means of economic development? And then we would really dive into more specific tools and strategies that you could think about as a town to both support farming from the business side of things, and then also protect your local agricultural land base. So there's a lot of different, both regulatory and non-regulatory tools that you could think about to try and achieve this. They can range from land use ordinances to comprehensive planning to issues related to property taxes, really sort of a wide range. And as part of this first year of trainings, we would also organize one or more sessions where we would invite in the local Walderboro agricultural community to come and sort of express what they think would be the most important for you all as a town to focus on. Of course, you know, you are driven by your constituents, so we'd want to make sure you have that opportunity, or multiple opportunities, to hear directly from the farming community. These trainings would be directed at the Select Board, Planning Board, and other committees as it's relevant. So if you have a comprehensive plan committee, if you have an economic development committee, we would do trainings for them as well, and potentially, you know, the Town Assessor. Other interested stakeholders and parties could certainly join in. And I don't know if I mentioned this, but right now, we are reaching out to towns in a specific geographic area in the mid-coast region. We're hoping to get three or four towns that are in the same geographic region together to participate in this program. We think there would be a lot of benefit in providing some peer-to-peer learning opportunities and doing some joint trainings with other towns that are nearby, if that is possible. Maine Farmland Trust would guide all of these trainings, and the informational basis for what we would be talking about would really be that guide that I mentioned when I first started speaking. We would potentially bring in other organizations that have a more refined expertise on a specific topic to, you know, train and provide input as well. And one very important piece to highlight is that this program and participation in it would be of no cost to the town. But what we were really looking for and what it would require is sort of a slight increased level of engagement. So maybe a few extra meetings from all of these boards and committees each year to listen and participate in these trainings as they play out. So that would be the first year, and then year two and three, there would really be a shift in focus to implementation. Maine Farmland Trust would continue to provide technical assistance to towns on implementing and advancing one or more of the tools and strategies that are covered through these trainings that we do and that you all identify as being interesting to you as a town. We are also envisioning incorporating some financial assistance for towns into this program through a potential mini-grant that could be made available to the town to move one or more of these tools or strategies forward after that first year of trainings. So for example, maybe you could use those funds to contract with an RPO or another entity that has expertise in a specific area to try and, you know, get the tool or strategy to support agriculture that you've identified into practice.
What's an RPO?
A Regional Planning Organization, excuse me. And yes, as I mentioned, Maine Farmland Trust would continue to be a resource throughout the three-year process, helping to, you know, give you those trainings and then provide technical assistance as it plays out. So in summary, it would be a three-year program, ideally with trainings throughout the first year, and then this grant application and implementation throughout year two and three. But of course, we're hoping to designing this around what makes the most sense for you all. Where I want to end it is really just ask what you all think. I don't expect you to have an answer tonight about whether or not you want to learn more and keep thinking about participating in this, but I'm really just here to answer any questions and sort of start an initial conversation with you all about this program that we're thinking of.
Paul?
I do have some questions. Your focus the first year is on training.
Yes.
And the second and third year is it's on implementing with grant money presumably.
Yes.
Which will require a match?
It will not require a match from the town, no. This participation-
No implementation matches at all? Everything's, okay.
We would be, we would be, if we were awarded this grant through the RCDI, we would be matching it with funds internally that we have. So it would be, apart from the USDA, apart from MFT, but at no cost to the town.
And how much money is involved here?
That is to be determined. I'm framing it as potential mini-grants, but I don't have an exact number.
Are we talking 100 grand, 50 grand, 10 grand, 2 grand?
I think the last two numbers you said are probably more than the ballpark.
All right. And do you want us to support the application for the grant?
Yes, so if you all did decide you wanted to move forward, next steps would basically look like, just signing, I believe it's like a letter of interest. As part of our application to USDA, we need to show that we've identified three or four towns that are interested in participating in this program with us. So that's kind of why I'm approaching you right now until, instead of, you know, after we receive the grant or not. So it would basically just be a statement of interest.
Right, Paul.
Are we competing with the other towns?
I wouldn't frame it that way, no. We are really in the early stages of starting to do outreach. Like I said, I've contacted a handful of towns in the mid-coast region, but I would not, I would not say that, no.
Are you contact, I'm sorry, are you contacting farms in these areas at all?
So Maine Farmland Trust has a wide network of farms that we work with through other programs. I specifically have not contacted them, but we have contacts with lots of farms in the town of Walderboro and neighboring towns.
Well, that's the thing is, if they're interested, they should be coming to us and say, "We want to be part of this." Is, I think, is the biggest thing. Because if we don't have any participants, we're going through all this, all this stuff, and nobody's there to help with the grants.
I think we'll get it. I think our farms, our, we have amazing farms, and I think we will be really-
Well, I'd like to see them come and say, "Well, yes, we'd like to participate and listen, and give the town the support from the farms."
Exactly. To speak to that, I totally agree with you that like the constituent input needs to drive this. And that's why, like, during this first year of trainings, we're really going to focus on having one or more sessions where we, so we help advertise. We let farmers know that this is happening, and we bring them in, either, you know, in this space or a different space, and do a listening session and give you all the opportunity to hear what would actually help them, what actually would be of a benefit. And then from there, identify tools and strategies.
We have the best cheese made right here in Walderboro.
That's good, maybe we'll get some snacks.
Well, that's what I think, you know, that's what I mean is, we need the community involved in this, not just the Select Board, the Planning Board, or the EDC. You know, we can do all this work and turn around and nobody's interested. We just wasted three years of our, you know.
I hear you, and then, yeah, it would definitely be a priority of the first year.
I think that's the reach out you guys need to make as well.
That's the great feedback, I appreciate that.
Anybody else?
I would just add that there are a lot of farmers in Walderboro that belong to your organization, and I would hope that you would talk to them and-
But it seems like we, I mean, in the recent years, we've had quite a few start, I mean, we have a new chicken breeder in town, and she's selling eggs, and, I mean, we have a great egg farm. I mean, we really do have quite a bit that people don't realize.
Absolutely, yeah, and, you know, this program as we're envisioning it would by no means be, you know, exclusively for farms that we have prior relationships with. It would be the entire agricultural community.
Cool. Anybody else got any questions? Anybody in the audience? Your op's a hook easy.
Thank you very much. So please, think about it amongst yourself. I can send some emails to Max, and we can communicate back and forth. And I'd love to just sort of, you know, if any questions come up later on, feel free to reach out. My contact is on that handout.
Would just-
Thank you. One side note, Walderboro has a shellfish committee, and now I guess fishing is now under the Department of Agriculture in the state, is that correct?
I didn't see that.
Not commercial, not shellfish.
Aquaculture.
Aquaculture is, okay.
I mean, believe it or not, picking crabs and lobster meat are under agriculture.
Okay.
It is, yep, so.
Great, thank you all very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next. Public hearings, any adjustments to the agenda?
I've got one.
Go ahead, big guy.
I'd like to add, new business, 10.4. Discuss the application, one application for the Archaeology Origin Committee.
Is that a motion, John?
Yes.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor? Any other adjustments to the agenda? Seeing none, we'll move along. All right, citizen comments? Anybody like to get up and speak, spill their guts? Not seeing anybody, all right, we'll move along. How about Select Board comments? Paul?
I've got a couple, and I don't want to take up too much time.
Well, this is long, which is-
I apologize, yeah, this doesn't happen very often. I was glad-
That's what you think? Oh, we're being funny.
Oh, that's good. I can take it. I was glad to see Jim Letney's email today when he asked about the asbestos mitigation progress for the office's house. And he, the question he asked was, "Can we get this moving before we get the grant money?" And Max, in his great wisdom, said, "Yes, we can, and I am," and so I'm really glad to hear that. So that seems to be moving forward. We've talked about this accident that occurred on Jefferson Street early Sunday morning, like about 2:00 or 3:00 o'clock. A car hit a house. It's not the first time. I've got a whole list of incidents on the, in that area of Jefferson Street that go back five or six, seven years. And it's kind of disturbing. So I guess my first request is for people to slow down, for gosh's sake, when you're driving in the village. There's no need to go just 70 miles an hour and run out of control and hit someone's house. I mean, someone could, it was within a foot of the front door, literally. So my hope is that people will pay attention and take care not to have this kind of thing happen.
And don't drink and drive.
And, and don't drink and drive. And maybe at some point, there'll be some more incentive to get this DOT program going, where we can put in some speed tables to maybe help mitigate some of that speed. But it's, it lies on the driver, they're responsible for what they do. And when they're not responsible for what they do, things happen that aren't very nice to people.
And we have put in for the Village Partnership Grant, and we should be hearing shortly.
Yep, yep, okay. Sorry, I'm just making sure. Are we doing anything with the annual report dedication? I hadn't, I didn't know that we were-
We've advertised.
You have?
Yes, the next meeting, you'll have your names.
Okay. And last but not least, and this is your reminder, Jan Griesenbrock's put some really nice photographs up in this room.
Yes, he did.
And huge thank you to him. They're beautiful, hope people come and see them. They're very artistic photographs, they, they look great. And, yeah, thank you, Jan Griesenbrock.
Took my, first thing in my town manager report, Paul.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay.
I didn't mean to steal your thunder. Here we go. John?
I have nothing.
Mike?
Just in the form of a question. Summertime is fast approaching, do we have the specs for the HVAC system in hand yet?
They are doing their second blower test on the, I just sent that to you, Will.
22nd.
22nd.
Okay.
And there are a few items he has to check above the police evidence room for the proper sizing of the vents, and then we will have it.
Thank you. Will? Will? Answer your report.
Town manager's report. Always fun. We are in the middle of our budget, we had our first budget meeting last Thursday, which was exciting. We got through the Police Department budget and the EMS Department budget. This Thursday night, we will be having presentations by the Fire Department, the Public Works Department, and the Transfer Station Department. So I know I had put out on Facebook that we were starting to talk about pay-as-you throw, and that the Transfer Station Committee will be having meetings starting May 3rd to delve more into that. And then there was an article in the Lincoln County News that Molly had interviewed John and Will, which all spurred lots of conversation and thoughts and questions, which is always a good thing when people get involved. So I will be forwarding all those questions, thoughts, concerns to the Transfer Station Committee. But it's really important that you watch those meetings. I'm sure we'll get a little taste of that at the Budget Committee meeting Thursday night, so if you want to tune in for that. They really are not as boring as people think. And as I said, it's a Budget Committee meeting. Everybody thinks the Select Board is the place to be. I think it's the Budget Committee meeting, because at the Budget Committee level with the Select Board, that's where people decide what the priorities are and what they're going to fund. And that is probably the most important job that anybody has, because that, that really sets the direction that the town is taking and their priorities. So please join us, it's really not boring. We try to make it as exciting as possible. Sometimes there's song. No more dancing, but a little bit of song. So please join in. And the only other thing that I wanted to let you know is, and you may not remember this, but long about the end of the fiscal year last year, we had chatted with our Public Works Director about equipment in the form of a wheel balancer and a lift. And those quotes have been reduced. We were, if you'll recall, I want to take you back in time. We were going to use some prior year funding to fund the lift and the tire wheel balancer for the Public Works Department. And that was going to be split out amongst our departments. So I just wanted to give you the updated numbers on that. The wheel balancer comes in at $46,735, and the equipment lift is at $38,255. And that is significantly less than the original quotes that we had went through with you and were approved. So I would just need your authorization for those two quotes tonight, just because there is a difference in what was originally expected through John's department and what actually it is.
Do you want a motion for that?
If you could, that would be lovely.
I'd make the motion that we proceed with the balancer for $46,735 and the lift for $38,255.
Is there a second? Second. Any discussion?
Is, is that balancer, maybe Will knows, is that, so now we can do all of our vehicles? Because I know we were contracting out-
No, it's all.
It's all.
All, all vehicles.
Okay.
And the lift will lift everything.
Everything.
But it's about-
Heavy trucks too?
Yeah.
No.
Yeah.
For that price? Yeah.
It's about $20,000 less than what we were originally quoted, which is why I had to come back to you. Which is why it's a good thing.
Does that lift just sit on the floor? They don't have to do any-
It'd be mounted in the, it'd be mounted in the deck.
It would be professionally mounted.
Yeah, it'd be installed, yeah, it'd be mounted in the deck, yeah.
So-
What's that reason?
And does that cost include the installation in? Or are we gonna do that ourselves?
Yes.
Wow.
I borrow it for the fire trucks.
So I would add in, just so you know, there's about another $6,800, because we do have to have the installation wheel adjust quote is $1,800, and also an electrical of $5,000, but that can be handled in this year's budget.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all is in favor?
Always-
And one abstention?
Always nice when I can come back and say, "The quotes were less than the original quotes."
Because that'll lift, pick trucks, that's, that's huge.
Fire trucks, they're actually heavier than our trucks, so.
And that's one of the-
Take the water out of them first.
That's one of the things I just want to point out, is that this is one of those things that I know the Budget Committee, John had, the Director of Public Works had spoken about, and the other departments had spoken about, about the time savings when this happens. And the, just the sheer time saved in being able to do that.
Send a truck to Portland or Bangor.
Correct.
Cool, awesome. All right, we'll move on to consent calendar. Somebody like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? All right, new business, Quarry Hill Preserve Mountain Bike Trail Network.
Don't hurry away, Max.
Bad Max.
So last year, we got a Maine Outdoor Heritage Fund grant to put some trails up at Quarry Hill. One trail's already been built so far, and we're going to be entering the spring season with the second one hopefully extending the loop that's been created. The agreement that I believe was sent out to all of you is just outlining some responsibilities going forward in case the partnership that's currently happened between the Town Office, Midcoast Conservancy, and the Midcoast Mountain Biking, yep, wants to explore doing some more trail work in the future, or if any other projects going forward with Quarry Hill. It's a similar agreement they have over in Thomaston, where it's just outlining the town would have the final say on where the trails are. Conservancy would just verify whether there's some natural issues going on, and the mountain biking group would provide volunteers and a good chunk of the financing, although we would still be pursuing some grant funding.
Cool. Now does the water district own any of that, or sewer district?
The sewer district owns a 12-acre parcel that's up in the far right corner.
Yeah.
But this isn't talking about that 12 acres.
Yeah, so then you're not going through that building to the others.
Nope, this is the 320-something acres that the town owns, and, yep.
Okay. Well, I was just curious.
Yeah, I understand.
You know I'm going with that.
Yeah, I know.
People are excited about this, by the way.
Oh, that's great.
That's what I was gonna ask, how do we know, how do we track the usage? How we know what people are using it? I mean, I get my bike out and go for a ride, I guess, but-
Yeah, I was gonna say, short of installing a light B camera.
Is it actually used?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
It is.
Good, good.
It is, and it's, I mean, it really wasn't used that land before much, so.
Yeah.
And this, and this group, they're great, I mean, they, they have so many volunteers. My sister's one of them, and they-
No bias in that, right?
But they, they really are, they, they're very involved with Thomaston, and they're part of Town Forest.
Are we advertising this for our local citizenry other than Select Board meeting talking about the grant and stuff?
No, so as, as part of the conditions of the, of the grant that I have right now, we do have to put out one big public notice and release just mentioning that we got the funding through Maine Outdoor Heritage Fund, and then just showing some of the pictures as well. That, that was, so I was gonna do like a Facebook post and then an article in the newspaper, kind of what we had to do with the, the fish counter and the boat launch that we got a year or so ago with the same grant.
Okay, yeah. Yes, it was a big local county news grant or something.
I was gonna say, Molly's here too, so.
Paul?
Have we settled the issue about the extensiveness of the trail? And there were some concerns raised about, I don't know, environmental impacts.
And that's what this agreement's sort of outlining?
So the trail will be, how long do we know now at this point? Or is it still in process?
I, I'm not sure exactly. I do have like the outlines and everything that shows the trail, the extension that they're planning on doing. It would be in the far, it would go pretty much around the existing farmland that we have.
Oh, cool.
I'm wondering about conflicts, is snowmobiles, ATVs, hikers, are these open to all, or?
Multi-use trails. Probably narrow, too narrow for snowmobilers, but mountain bike and pedestrian was the aim.
There are trails up there, the sleds that go up through them.
Yeah, they go through, the town, the town trail goes through there.
Now that it's, there's not any snow out, I- I knocked on wood.
You're gonna have blizzard next week. Blame it on Max.
No, you know what? It's already rented, because I took off my snow tires a few days ago, so I know that there's going to be a snowstorm now. No, I encourage people to go up to Quarry Hill. I don't mind showing people wherever they may be interested. It's just, if you were to go up to the Quarry Hill and you see the farm just ahead, you take a left and keep going until the clearing and the entrance is there. Yep, I just decided to try and give some directions to a trail out in the middle of nowhere.
Probably have to put up a little sign.
Did really well though, Max.
Thank you.
Understanding exactly what you mean.
Field trip, next meeting.
Go ahead, Will.
Are you gonna work on parking up there?
Parking is actually sort of the next phase of this. So the Outdoor Heritage Fund grant was just to get a trail going on up there, try and show interest that there's more to Quarry Hill than just the quarry and that blueberry field. The parking was something that's been a bit of back and forth between the Conservancy and the town, and this is, part of this agreement's sort of acknowledging that we want to update the easement, and we want to do some long-term play, trail planning, and parking is part of the item we do want to do.
Public Works, do you know who that is?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we'd have to, that's probably a different grant that we'll get.
Cool.
Volunteers.
Any other questions for Max? Seeing none, you're off the hook.
All right. Just more of a motion so that Julie can sign off on the agreement.
Oh, you just need to make a motion.
Okay, would somebody like to make a motion?
I'll get, I'll make the motion to- I'll make the motion to sign off on the project agreement for the Quarry Hill Preserve Mountain Bike Trail Network.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, VOA eighty gray water discussion.
That's the Max, he's coming.
I saw Brian Seitz was in the waiting room, so I...
Brian Seitz from VOA?
Yeah.
I'm here. I'm just eating my dinner. Sorry.
So, VOA's been, right now, in the works of just getting the site ready for the senior affordable, senior housing projects. I don't know if anyone's been up to School Street recently. There's no school anymore.
Great.
We have been working on the water pressure and fire safety issue. That was something that was a condition of approval when the Planning Board reviewed it about a year ago where VOA had to do an extension to have a fire hydrant close by to help with some fire suppression. That was the standard that we have in our works. So, the water line's not really the best right now. There's not enough pressure that will get up to what Chief Smeltzer's comfortable with. So, an alternative that's proposed is to create a cistern in the area that's across from the school that the town still owns, that triangle piece. It'd be about fourteen thousand gallon tank, I believe is the last number that Brian told me. And it would just be permission for the tank to be buried in that parcel so that can be used for water suppression in that area. Volunteers America would still pay for the construction of it all. It's just permission to use that land. The alternatives are upgrade the whole water system, which will be millions of dollars and take a long time to do, which is a different thing that I have to work towards. The second alternative would be to have Volunteers America go back to the Planning Board to waive this requirement, which Chief Smeltzer and Mark and myself are all very against for safety reasons, obviously. John?
This cistern, maybe Brian, maybe you know the answer. Is it a, what type of material is the cistern made out of?
It's, I don't know, I wish Norm was here, who's our engineer, put it together. We have all the specs you sent over to Max. He can share all that stuff with you. But it's a concrete structure that they sell it in segments.
Yep.
Really, I think what we found was it's cheaper to do a fourteen, like the chief came to us and said, hey, you guys should do, we need you to do at least a thirteen thousand gallon tank. We found it was cheaper because they sell these concrete forms and certain even numbered feet. So, we end up with a fourteen thousand gallon tank that's cheaper than the thirteen thousand.
And has your engineers talked to the state as far as the fire suppression system? That's all going to be designed and permitted and that's all based on your load of your water that you need.
Yeah, so there's two separate things. So, this thirteen thousand gallon tank is just for outdoors fire suppression.
Okay.
Inside for internal fire suppression for the sprinkler system, we have a separate five thousand gallon tank.
Okay, so that's totally separate. That's for your life safety, get out of the building quick.
Correct.
Got you. And is this tank, it's got an internal pump, pump it up to the, there'll be a stand pipe right there for the fire department?
Max, do you have to answer that one? I don't understand a hundred percent.
Stand pipe on this tank?
There's not a stand pipe. Basically, the five thousand gallons has a pump that basically feeds the sprinkler system and that would be a fire department connection. And this fourteen thousand gallon tank would, could be used to augment that.
So, that's in addition to the life safety tank that they already have internally?
Right, the five thousand is to kind of get you to the point where the fire department can get there and...
Yep.
Bob?
Is there a lot of ledge where you want to put that tank in on that triangle?
Brian, you can join in on that?
Yeah, so it's a big concern. We, the engineer put together four, four and a half different options. There was option one, two, three, three A, I think, and four. And, you know, putting it in different places along that School Street, you know, and then like a little further down, but there is ledge there, right? So, what we're concerned about is, because we've not, because that's not our property, right? Like, we've done borings on the property where we're going to be building. We know what kind of ledge we're getting into. We know how much we have to blast. We know there's ledge there. The problem is I'm up in a little bit of a time crunch here. Like, I don't have time to do the borings and get all the figures together before I have to put in my application to main housing on the twenty-first. So, we know there's ledge. We're going to have to just make some assumptions and work with the town to figure out, you know, is it going to be better to blast? Or we just make the assumption that we're going to fill?
Raise it up.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, either way, I mean, the fourth option that we came up with today kind of last minute and it's probably not the best was, you know, put it down where the old school was. We just had Timo and Abayda because there are probably not ledge down there, but I think there's some, you know, Mark can speak to it a little better than I can. There's, you know, some logistical issues with that site.
Bob?
The old building.
I'm sorry, I don't understand fire fighting systems very well, so I apologize for the question. But you're putting a five thousand gallon tank inside the new building? Did I understand that right? Okay.
Because that's dedicated to the interior sprinkler system within the building.
All right, but if you need it, there's extra water on the outside in this fourteen thousand gallon tank.
Correct.
And you're going to use the pump inside to gain the water from the outside tank? Am I understanding that right?
No, pump in the tank.
No, because I was wondering, how the heck do you get into a building and hook up?
No, that...
To a pump when it's burning?
Pump in the tank.
Okay.
Fourteen thousand gallon...
Like a submersible pump you have in your house.
All right, and they're putting it into the pump.
No, that would be in the tank to get the water up.
Ah, all right.
Get the building.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is just, I mean, think of it this way. This is just in lieu of having adequate water pressure, you need to have some sort of outside water source that you get that demand of water either to our building or any of the surrounding buildings. I mean, you know, part of the plan was we put this fire hydrant in. It services not just us, but it services all the structures around us, right? So, like this tank is going to serve that purpose to some degree for a time until you can upgrade your infrastructure and then eventually the tank will be obsolete and then you'll have your, you'll just have your fire hydrant there.
Okay. Can I ask?
Go ahead.
Sorry. Did we pick the best spot to bury this fourteen thousand gallon tank?
Well, we're doing the best we can.
I mean...
We're doing the best we can. We know we can't, there's no place on our property. So, here's the thing. We won't own this tank once it's in the ground, okay?
Yeah.
So, the town will own it, the town will service it, the town will maintain it. They'll fill it and all that kind of stuff, right? But even if we tried to put it on our land, on the land where we're going to build, there's no good place where we would have to blast a crap ton of ledge to get it in there. So, we felt like across the street on public lands, it's going to be, you know, a public utility, basically, made the most sense. Now, we don't know what's over there. That's kind of the problem right now. This is, by the way, this is all new, Max, within what, the last two weeks? We've been trying to solve this problem?
Yep, about, it just...
I mean, just thinking outside the box and it's dangerous to do at a public meeting, but what the heck? Tennis court area?
John?
Is the old, I'm sorry, you may and may not know this, Max or Brian, where the old house was...
Yeah, just north of the school.
Just north, is that, is that the VOA's property now or is that just...
I think that's, I think that's just in, I think that's just in the VOA property, I think.
Because my thought is we filled that foundation in. There's a big hole in the ground already. Something to think about.
But will the building go that far?
Yeah, so I don't know. I have to look at, you'd have to look at the...
I, yeah, that's something we'd have to talk with the engineer, who I thought was going to be on tonight too.
Is he waiting in the waiting room by chance? I told him six thirty-five.
No, I don't see anyone else in there.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not familiar with which building you're referring to, so I can't really answer that. But I think, you know, what, I think what, what we have to be careful of too because we're using, you know, federal and state dollars in this project, like anytime we put public infrastructure on the land, it causes all sorts of issues with HUD and agreements and easements and whatnot that we may not have time to get in place before we have to have this application in. Definitely wouldn't get it done by the twenty-eighth. And then we have a second application due in June. So, we have to be careful about putting pub, stuff that the town's going to own on the property where we're building the facility.
What do we own? Look, there isn't much, two tenths of an acre.
Across the street, I think it was about three tenths, maybe half.
It's not a very big piece. So, I mean, it's not like you're going to build a big house on it. So, I mean, if we have this for the neighborhood...
No, and this is going to be buried underneath it too.
Right. Yep, and there's quite a slope there too, so you could damn well put that fourteen thousand gallon tank and then not have to go very deep.
Build it up.
And just...
Put the insulation.
Yep.
All right.
I have seen...
So, Norris have, no, I'm going to send him the link.
Okay.
Again.
I have seen alternate means of delivering...
Water?
Pressure. You have, you have water on the site and the problem is you don't have enough pressure at the site to get it up to the sprinkler systems and have them operate. But another approach is to just build a booster pump inside the building without a cistern? Has that option been looked at?
Yeah, Mark, well, yeah, Mark might want to talk about that one.
We went over this. I've had numerous conversations with Main Water and the engineer of Main Water as well. And that's when we came up with, because originally we were talking about, well, let's just extend an eight inch main all the way from the twelve inch main out on Main Street. That's not an option. The problem is that the system built the way it is, if you go up the hill to Coles Hill, the pressure there is between eight and twelve. So, when you start drawing off from a hydrant, it draws down the pressure where you'll start creating a vacuum and potentially destroy people's hot water heaters and stuff like that. There's no capacity in the system. Even if they ran a brand-new eight inch main up through there, they still would not gain any more flow than what that hydrant can deliver. And that hydrant can deliver around three hundred and fifty best guess. So, you can't support, you know, a fire load in that area. So, we had to go with the tank option.
Any other questions? Do you want us to...
It's just a motion to allow Volunteers America to look at the town-owned property that's abutting theirs so that a cistern could potentially be installed there.
Do we hear a motion on that?
I'll break that one.
But wait, I'm sorry.
Well, I'm sorry, unless it was a different thing you needed specifically.
No, I think, I think what specifically what you guys should address is that we are going to, we are going to, we, when I say we, the town and VOA are going to work on putting in this system likely on public land, but that the town is going to own and operate it going forward. VOA will not own and operate that piece of infrastructure.
But you will, oh, and there's Norm. But VOA is paying for the construction and installation?
Correct, correct, but we will, we can't, because it's public infrastructure, we got to be careful of A, not being on VOA land because of like all the federal stuff and B, that the town understands that we are not going to maintain that going forward. Because it's, yeah, it is for, put in for this building, but it's going to service all the structures around it as well.
So, even after Main Water, obviously, this exposed that we need to do something about the pressure in that total area? Even after that system isn't, even after we upgrade that system, that cistern can still be utilized, correct?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, you guys can do whatever you want to with it. It can become obsolete if you have the water pressure to, the hydrant, it's yours to do as, as you wish.
Well, more, I was always told more is better, so.
Yeah.
What's the lifespan?
They're concrete tanks and there's, there's, if they go with the design that I submitted to them, there's basically three pipes that connect two concrete tanks together. And then you have a riser for fire department connection and then there's an air riser so that air can get back in, so you don't create a vacuum. And then there's manhole cover for inspection purposes and stuff like that. So, the only stuff that you see is basically the top of the manhole cover, ballers for protection and then the vent and the...
But what's the life cycle, life expectancy?
I know, I've had him for umpteen years and...
I'm just curious, we've got to look forward to, or if we're looking at possibly getting a grant to upgrade our water system? And when that's, that could be backup if we get up or get
Yeah.
The water system in place.
Yeah, as Julie said, more is better. The, this upgrade of the whole system that I mentioned a while ago, that's, that's going to be a number that I don't want to say because I feel it's going to give a heart attack and if I don't get any grants...
What's this project going to cost?
The cistern, I think that was estimated seventy-five?
Yeah, so we're looking at about seventy-five just for the installation. The unknown piece though is the back, how much backfill and or ledge we need to blast out, that needs to be blasted out of there.
I'm just curious what we're going to have to be responsible for after and how long it's going to be before we have to do things to it as a town-owned structure.
Cistern?
Bob? Is the blasting going to cause problems with the neighbors?
We'd probably have to notify the neighbors whenever that's going to happen.
But we're not sure.
We're not, yeah, but that's, but that's getting ahead to say all this stuff. We might not have to blast. They might just have to dig. But we would have, but as a courtesy, I'd say we send out notices when something is going to happen, if something's going to happen.
Very little, very little impact, low-impact blasting.
So, I guess, Bob?
We need to rephrase the motion a little bit.
Yes, correct.
So, the motion is to provide land for the use of Volunteers of America, town-owned land, that will remain under the ownership of the town in order to construct a eighteen thousand gallon cistern to provide fire protection for the senior housing facility that they're going to be building. And they are going to be responsible for the construction and installation costs of this tank.
Sound good?
Brian, I assume that's what you're looking for?
I would say also servicing the main hill area.
Yeah, as a community asset, services our building and everyone in the neighborhood.
As, in addition to serving their building, it would also serve the buildings in the surrounding community for fire protection.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Settle that, Max?
Yep, unless you have any questions for Brian or the engineer Norm just got on, so...
Yeah, if you have any more technical questions, Norm's here, because I'm just making stuff up.
You're doing a very good job.
You did a good job, Brian. You did a good job. All right. I was watching the whole thing. All right, thanks, guys.
We'll move on to the next one, ACL contract for you.
As you know, this is something we do every year. This is because we contract with Lincoln County for ACO services and the chief has recommended that we continue to do so because we do not have anyone trained to be an ACO and nor do we want to take on that responsibility.
I tried.
But I believe, if you recall from last year, we had about six hundred dog calls or animal, animal calls. And as a friendly service reminder, I don't know if anybody has noticed, there is an increased awareness of these dogs throughout the community. And we just want to remind people, please keep your dogs
Leashed.
Leashed and safe and not running about.
I don't think the price will change. I think it might stay the same.
Well, I believe that there is, I do believe there is a little price increase, but that's based on what their contract says.
I didn't see a price going up.
Yeah. There was, just so you're aware, every year there is some type of a small increment. I think this was at three percent because their costs for services go up, just like ours do.
But it was, was it six thousand last year that we paid them?
Maybe it's more than that.
Was it more than that, I remember, but maybe it's gone up, that's maybe an old number. I just didn't find a number anywhere in the contract and maybe I'm becoming blind, but-
So, no, there wasn't a number in the contract, hold on, I can tell you. It's through the sheriff.
Three hundred dollars, look at page, uh, paragraph nine B. Town agrees to compensate, accounting amount of not to exceed three hundred dollars providing a loan.
I'm just gonna tell you though what we paid last year because-
Twenty-three ten per hour.
And then it's-
Thank you.
We paid seven thousand four hundred and seventy-three dollars.
So three percent, so it's not much.
We budgeted eight grand for the initial issue.
Somebody like to make a motion to approve the contract with the ACL?
So.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Oh, Max left, no, Max is still here, just a heads up. I wanted to add something before John, we, before we left, lost Max. The Elm Street borings were done. If you'll recall for the culvert at Elm Street, we have ledge. So.
Maybe I should quickly, if you've already decided to, I should give some good news at least for updates. So I've talked with, uh, John McClain, who's the, uh, person from DEP who handles our grants, I've talked with John Daigle, I've talked with Rob Prue from Pine Street Engineering. The alternative that we can do, and we're gonna look more into, is to, uh, use the grant to remove the culvert and instead install a bridge, a thirteen foot bridge, which I was told the grant is eligible to do, it's able to handle that and, uh, Rob's looking into it. It will still be a bit expensive, but not as expensive as doing a box culvert in, I think it was what, seven?
Right, but what I find interesting is when we asked that question, because Mike, you had brought that up.
That's right.
We were told it was more expensive, so-
Well, then we found ledge.
Okay, oh, so once you add the ledge in, okay, I see.
It's cheaper.
It's cheaper.
Who knew?
Cheaper than the ledge, okay. Alright, I just wanted to let you know that was an update that when they said ledge, I thought ledge, I should tell you. I'm done now, I'm sorry, I ruined the agenda.
More updates on that later.
Alright, ten-four, archaeology committee nomination, is that what that was?
Yeah, we received, uh, we received two applications, one, I'd like to, uh, I'd like to recommend that we approve one of the applications now, still, uh, the other one still has to be followed up with. Uh, we got an application from Mr. Bill Maxwell to be a member of the Archaeology Origin Committee. And everyone knows Bill being a lifelong resident of Waldorf and the president of Waldorf Historical Society and I would recommend that we approve him to be a member of that committee.
Is there a second?
Second?
Any discussion? I don't know, I think he's a little shady. That's alright.
Takes one to know.
I learn from the best. All those in favor? Yep, you're all set, Bill, you're the first one on the board.
Thank you.
You might be the-
Oh, no, that'll be a-
Sure you won't fight with yourself?
Michael. Haven't, haven't seen his application yet.
Oh.
I got, I got another one.
You've been away.
Oh, that's right, that's right.
I think I sent it to you, right?
I think you did, I think you did.
I haven't received it yet, though.
Alright, old business, Madomic River Capacity Study.
So we have, um, submitted for a grant for the capacity study. But in conversations, as you know, are concerned about how the river is used. Um, in, um, conversation with the DMR, um, a marine spatial plan was suggested that, um, we add that along with our capacity study where we actually take a look at the river and, and, and figure out what is there and truly do a plan for what we'd like to see preserved as clam flats, recreational and really look at it as a planning tool that the town can have. And include that with, um, the capacity study. And if we decide to pursue a legislative, uh, special closure for the Madomic while we're doing the capacity study, um, which we should have an end date on, a sunset on, um, we could then, um, at the end, end up with the capacity study and then our spa, marine spatial planning document that would set what can go forward with the river.
John?
Is this Madomic River only the title?
In, in-
Or the whole Madomic River?
In, only in Waldorf.
Yeah, but we, Madomic River goes up to Washington.
Well, but, well.
Marine, it says marine.
And does it also count, what about the Back River?
So-
And Bugtussel?
It would include our estuary, I should say, Madomic Estuary, is that better? I would delineate it from, personally, I would delineate it from perhaps the Main Street Bridge out towards Friendship or I, but we can't go into Bremen or-
Right, yeah, 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 I understand that.
But, um-
They may wanna jump on.
But, um-
I know French will probably-
You know, we might wanna consider where we can establish more borings or something like that, so we, we have to look at it carefully. And I will be honest with you, I've never participated in a marines, in marine spatial planning, so I have to look at it in more detail. Um, we'll probably need a professional for that and input obviously from our, um, select board, planning board, all, all of our boards, our shellfish committee. But it's a, an excellent, from what I have been told, it is an excellent planning tool. But it really will look at what, what's our navig, navigable, navigable, I got it, uh, channel. Where, what do we see for the, the future, what should it look like, what, what do we wanna encourage? Um, based on our inventory and our capacity study of, uh, our native species. So I think we need to, to pursue that and I just wanted to give you an update that that would be something we'd wanna include um, as we progress, is the marine spatial planning.
Is there any town in the state that's done this?
I don't know yet, I haven't gotten that far, but I, I wanted to make sure it was out there. I, I've read plans, um, they, I don't believe there was one in Maine that I read. Maybe Brenton has one.
This study is spatial planning?
Well, it's capacity study.
It's S.P.A.T.I.A.L.
But we're trying to learn whether oysters and clams can coexist in the same estuary.
In the capacity study, we're going to see what do we have and what can coexist and be happy together. The marine, another component of that is the marine spatial planning. And that encompasses where you might wanna designate certain areas, so like we know that we have a significant alewife population, we might wanna designate certain areas of that for alewives, we might want to also, we have a significant elver fishery in the Madomic. So there might be seasons of the year where you wanna have special care in certain areas and that would all be done under this marine spatial planning.
Well, does that at some point become part of a, I mean, it's a planning tool, it's a great planning tool. Uh, but is it at some point become part of an ordinance structure that we need to create or craft so that it's embedded in the, the fabric of how we govern ourselves?
It would eventually
Yeah.
End up there.
Okay.
But before we get there, we would actually have to have the
Right.
Spatial, marine planning, spatial, marine spatial planning study.
Is this something that would require, if we got to that point, DMR approval? Or could we just do it on our own without them?
I don't think it's something that they get involved in. It's something they can recommend, but I, they don't do the spatial planning.
Okay.
And I do not believe they, I think it's something that we as a town have the authority to do without the DMR. That's how it was presented to me.
That's good.
It just gives us another quiver in our
Arrow.
Arrow in our quiver, I'm sorry.
Yep, and if we have to pursue legislation, I've talked to our senator, her and I have discussed this. If it's necessary, then we will put in a, we can't this year, but till our next session, we're not taking any more bills, so.
We did get a, um, we did get a notice that the, um, proposed oyster, um, farm on Back River was denied. So
Thank you, John.
We could do, um, well, a lot, actually more, at, at least three people, and I should, I should say this publicly, three residents, um, wrote letters and our, um,
Harbor master.
Harbor master, uh, Justin Hills did a, a great job too of, um, he was out there taking pictures and, and he, he put a lot of time and effort into that. Um, as did our residents and so that's something that we could already use for the spatial planning, so like we would know that already that's probably, already not a spot that you would have anything, any aquaculture located in because of its proximity to the navigational channel and the clam beds, so.
The Back River.
The Back River. But, so items like that are useful to help with the spatial planning. But I just wanted to give you an update. No, I just wanted to give you an update.
Okay. Anything else for the next meeting for the agenda? We cleared up quite a bit of stuff tonight, so we'll do stuff next week.
Well, I was thinking at least for the April meeting, and I could be wrong, Max, did EDC, was they, were they going to have their year end report by April?
Uh, we had to cancel the meeting in March, so I'm going to say no. But I'll check with Conrad.
I wanted to get back on track of having a committee or a department head, but since we're just seeing all the department heads for budget, I was trying to think of, committees that we might wanna, I'll start inviting them again for like every other meeting.
My impression is the EDC wants to come and make a report.
Right, but again, we didn't meet in March, so I don't know.
It'll be in April though.
We'll meet in April and
Yeah.
I'll check with Conrad, I'm pretty.
Okay, that's what I had in mind.
Yeah.
Well, next meeting's the twenty-sixth, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But even in the future, just to make sure that's back on our list of things to do.
Maybe we'll get an HVAC recommendation by then?
They're here the twenty-second.
Yeah, maybe we'll see, it'll be tight. Sorry, I did, don't have to-
I didn't say anything.
Oh. Come on, that's HVAC update.
Okay, I did, go.
Does somebody like to make a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Oh, I have one other thing. I totally forgot. We had a request, we had a request for an ordinance dealing with food sovereignty.
Yep.
So I'll put that on for the next agenda.
I think I forwarded a, a draft copy.
I think he forwarded, yeah, but we missed the agenda on that, so
Yeah.
We, it's a citizen request, whether or not you'd like to put it on the, um, June warrant or even do it on the November warrant. Um, but we did have a citizen's request for consideration from the select board. And that will be, I can put that on for the next year.
Is that that email you sent to them?
Yeah, that was the, that was the law.
I thought it was a state law, there's some differences about that.
I was trying to read into that too.
Yeah, no, because I was under the impression too that that's what the state just voted on, but it's not exactly that, so.
But, but we can go over that.
Max will go over it at the next meeting.
Well, when are we supposed to sign the end, I don't see anything else.
I signed, yeah.
So was there a motion to adjourn or?
Yes, there was, and we voted on, yes.
Alright.
Sorry. Julie's bad, Julie's bad.